Go Jamie.
I'm already recording Jamie.
Okay, give me two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to council on Monday, June twenty second, twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. Calling me during at four P M. As always, remind everybody put their electronic device on to vibrator switch on. As council is any additions or deletions to the agenda today? Hearing that? I got a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, June twenty seven, twenty twenty-two as our meeting council certainly are mandated. Go by. Counselor Valance, everybody counsel aid, all in favor? Very thank you. Any declarations of interest today? Hearing that? Have a motion here that council hereby adopts minutes of the regular meeting of council that were held on Monday, June thirteen, twenty twenty-two as certainly amended. Any arrows or missions in those minutes? You move a seconder? Counselor Lake and Counselor Valance? All in favor? Very thank you. It's happening. We have a delegation in regard to the towns, community, safety and well-being plan. This will be a virtually presented media presentation. And Melissa and Sean, welcome. And the floor is going to be yours for the next ten to fifteen minutes. We look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Melissa Chelye and I am with ISN. I'll pull up the presentation. Okay, so I'll begin by providing a high-level summary of community safety and well-being planning. This is an approach that supports communities in taking a leadership role in identifying as well as developing local solutions for safety and well-being priorities that are impacting residents within your community. The framework uses a holistic approach to address these local priorities by implementing action items for each priority that's been identified under four planning areas. These planning areas include social development, prevention, risk intervention, and incident response, also known as emergency response. The plan for your community was developed using the following three guiding success factors. Community collaboration, which really focuses on the commitment from agencies and from the community as a whole to really focus on community safety and well-being and the action items within the plan and make it a priority for for ongoing implementation and sustainability. The second is data informed. And what this focuses on is hearing feedback from the community, from service providers, from the general public, and taking that information as well as the expertise within your service provider agencies in your community to identify the specific neighborhoods, areas, places within your community that could potentially benefit from additional supports in that area. And the third is risk-driven. And that really looks at, again, bringing agencies together to share data, share information where possible to focus on what the 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 priority needs are and how to come together to target service delivery to address those. So community feedback was received, as I mentioned, from service providers as well as the general public. This slide here provides a bit of an overview of what we heard from those survey responses. There was a good range of ages of responses that we received. So you'll see here that there's the three age categories that we've that we've shown there. There's a large percentage of the community that feel safe, which is a very positive thing. Again, a good portion of the survey respondents said they are in good health, which is also very positive. And then a piece here that just highlights some areas for consideration throughout implementation for this plan and for future planning. The availability of recreational activities and special events in the community. The availability of grocery stores and access to public transportation. These were three items that were noted within the surveys that we just wanted to to make a mention of as we go through some of those survey results. So now moving into the actual three local priority risks that were identified through the through combining the responses we heard from the engagement sessions as well as from the data review of local plans that already exist. The three local priority risks identified were mental health and addictions, affordable housing, and access to services. And as we mentioned in the earlier slides, within each of these three local priority risks, there is an action plan identified for each with under four, the four planning areas. Here we will highlight action items that are recommended as as the priority action items to get implementation started and build that foundation for ongoing sustainability of the plan. There's four recommended recommended action items here. The first is the development of a committee structure, developing a local steering committee as well as a planning committee. And with those committees, you get the commitment from municipal representatives, the highest level of government. You also get the commitment from service agencies, key stakeholders, as well as local groups and and community members. Community mobilization is the second. It focuses on on identifying those those opportunities where service delivery can be can be changed slightly so that services are offered where people closer to where people live and where those priority needs are. The third is the situation table. This the situation table already exists, but it's about looking at opportunities where there could be some expansion, potentially engaging additional community partners to join. And the fourth is mental health crisis response. This is a very important action item as it sees a collaborative response to mental health crisis calls within your community. And it looks at engaging police services, other emergency response, and healthcare services to work together to respond to those crisis calls and allow for the appropriate services to be delivered. So finally, some results of community safety and well-being planning as it's implemented. A commitment to address local needs and priorities as a community. Again, we talk about the importance of community collaboration, resource sharing, information sharing. There is so much expertise and knowledge across many organizations, and one agency can't do it alone. So there is a lot of power behind coming together to address some of these needs. The second is a clear plan that's developed through feedback from the general public, from service providers, and ultimately implemented in partnership to reduce crime or victimization over time. And then finally, this focuses on building strong working relationships between agencies and community members. And examples here that we mentioned, police, social services, healthcare, education, not-for-profit groups, local businesses, and many more. And that's the conclusion of the presentation that provides an overview of your local priority risks, some recommended action items. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Yeah, thanks for that, Melissa. I appreciate that. I'll open up the questions of Melissa. Counselor Lake?
Yeah, Melissa, maybe just a question about, so as we went through COVID, obviously, I think most municipalities were bringing all these stakeholders together to have what sounds like the sort of groups you're talking about. Are you seeing in other municipalities where that experience is they're just trying to continue those tables on? Because it's my worry is it's we're a really small administration and to ask another another thing is hard, but it seems like we kind of did a little bit of that work. I just don't know what's going on out in the field.
So how I would, how I would start with with this piece is your question is a common one. Oftentimes in smaller communities, there's there's not enough resources to form multiple communities. Or sorry, multiple committees. My recommendation, when we receive a question like that, is you may not necessarily need to form a brand-new committee. As you mentioned, you have a lot of those committees already formed within the community. And oftentimes, they're doing a lot of the work and the planning that is already associated with the action items. And and they have that expertise needed to implement that. So opportunities there would be to engage those existing communities to say, we recognize the work that this committee has done in our community and the expertise and the value that you have here. And we see a fit for this community to take a lead role in the implementation of this plan. So although we recommend the steering committee and the leadership committee, please know that the intention of community safety and well-being planning is to fit your community in the best way possible. So it does not necessarily have to be brand-new. It could be leveraging existing assets and existing best practices that you have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor DeWushen.
Yes, I see in the action plan and all the priorities, there's a seem to be a duplication of services. D S A handles social, some social issues. The district health unit will handle some of the issues there as well as mental health. And the police services board obviously is the other. Are you advocating or are you recommending that small communities get those groups together on a regular basis? As opposed to, I'll say, council or administration trying to spearhead that coordination? And then in that case, wouldn't it be best for us to lobby, you know, our M P Ps to get that coordination in small community? I understand that we would like to have it maybe specialized for our unique circumstances in the community. But we have agencies that are responsible for that and that really falls outside of, other than our input, council or administrations mandated on how we run our community.
Thank you for that question. That's a very good question. So yes, you're you're correct in saying that a lot of the social issues that that have been identified in the community safety and well-being plan are typically handled by by social service agencies or other agencies within the community. However, a part of community safety and well-being planning in the overall framework is to have commitment at the highest level. In this case, commitment at the highest level within your community refers to mayor and council. And and the reason for that is because when community agencies start collaborating and start working with the public and start finding out what the root causes to some of the issues are that individuals are experiencing, you may find that there is a lot that the municipality can support within this work, whether that be some sort of lighting projects down the road or whether that be, you know, community beautification in certain areas where there might be some needs associated with those local priority risks. What I would suggest in this case is maybe a municipal representative on that that committee, that local committee that is able to to be the go-between and and identify those opportunities where council and where the the community may be able to work together to to assist with some of the needs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. That you I think your answer counts to the question by 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 all means. I think the reality is that you're right. We might have to appoint as part of our our committees that we represent and we sit on a member that sits on that situation table going forward as part of the community safety well-being plan. That way there, you're absolutely right, because if there is an area that needs to be lit up, it might come through the police services board, but it might go through the victim services or it might go through the D S A, but bringing everybody together, the council member comes back, speaks to their council, and then it gets re-discussed through budget process and the need in the community about the safety, whether it's a sidewalk at the light or it's a community garden.
Absolutely.
That's a that's a good point. And I and I think your opening statement around the and surveys. You know, we try to stay on top of the community and see what's the needs of the community through the police service, through the council, through, you know, different surveys and understand the need. So that's a good part by having a community safety plan as well. Bringing those ideas back to the council on a yearly basis for the budget process to implement those on an ongoing basis. Anybody else? So so we're very pleased that we're working with our neighboring communities to continue to focus and get the community safety plan developed. And we believe that because we all have like-minded issues within our communities. Marathon is very lucky to have the situation table and the members that are there are committed. So that is the key, is having those social services, the members and agencies representing all the residents in our community for needs. And we don't, we're not the experts. Nobody at the state was an expert in the needs of people in our community regards their social or mental health issues, but we're definitely here to support. And that's the key role of this government, this government and local governments is to make sure they support the residents in their community. So our administration is working closely with the other communities and we hopefully have that wrapped up soon. Obviously, it was a big part of the election, the government that, you know, that we have a change in the Solicitor General's office. So what does that look like going forward? Hopefully, all things stay the same and we continue on the process going forward.
Yes.
So with that, I thank you for doing your presentation today, and that council will be looking forward to getting the community safety plan once it's completed with the four communities that we're working with.
Thank you so much for having me. It's been a pleasure.
Great, thanks, Melissa. Have a good day.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, next we have report on the corporate strategic plan progress report.
So the town of Marathon's current strategic plan was endorsed by council in May of two thousand and nineteen. Component of the plan is to complete regular performance reviews and present them to council, which is, of course, what we're doing today. And our current municipal plan will sunset with the term of council. So the next six months, as you'll see, is a busy time for us to complete the current plan. So with respect to twenty twenty-two, the active living center funding model. So administration is re-envisioning the concept as per direction by council. And we expect that we'll have a presentation for council in July at the regular council meeting, which will, of course, be made available to the public as well. We have started the process of completing a recreation master plan, you know, really looking at what the community wants from a programming perspective. But with the maternity leave of Mrs. Goodchild, this has just been put on hold until her return in twenty twenty-three. New residential development planning, of course, this is a high topic of interest within the community. And our plan is to go up for an expression of interest to identify potential builders in the fall of twenty twenty-two. And really what we're doing right now administratively is dusting off the plans for the Penn Lake subdivision that were originally completed, which sees about another hundred and twenty to hundred and thirty potential developments available in that area. So we're going to be completing the survey leading up to the fall of this year for that area. With respect to the new works and operations facility, which council approved as part of the budget this year, the final building design is almost complete. Works and operations manager is finalizing that this week. Potential builders have been identified through a pre-qualification process. And the project tender will be issued within the next month, and construction is expected to start in August. And in reality, we're likely going to get the foundation and the forms in place, take a break through the winter, and then restart in the spring with summer of next year, likely the complete transition over to the building. So we're right on schedule with that project. Firefighter training facility. So the facility is operational. So this is the facility out at our pit on Camp Nineteen Road. We've had one regional training event this year and two more are planned for the remainder of twenty twenty-two. And I think that's what's great about this facility is a lot of the training now we do in-house, and we invite other communities to come and train with us as opposed to sending our firefighters out of town. So that's project, that project's worked well. Completion of the broadband project. So that's our partnership with T. Batel and the township of Terrace Bay. So that project is in the final stages of completion. And the project is, I believe, live in some parts of the community already. I know there are some questions around some of the final stages of construction, you know, such as, you know, grass planting in residential yards, you know, driveways, things like that. There is a third-party auditor that's been on the project that has notes on all of that. And within our agreement with T. Batel, all those issues will be rectified before the the project can be closed. So if residents have concerns, then by all means, they can contact us and we'll be in touch with the auditor to make sure those get fixed. We had a lodging and accommodation study in in our plan. We've removed that, obviously, with no requirement with the ongoing development of multi-resident and hotels coming on stream this year. Our official plan, we need to start the process. It's a ten-year plan for municipality under five thousand people. So our last one came into effect two thousand and fifteen. The new one will be due in twenty twenty-five. And we'll start this process in the fall of this year, and we expect we'll have an announcement around the C B O in the coming weeks, which is positive. The Pebble Beach project is on stream and online in terms of its schedule. So the final project design will be complete in June. The project will be tendered in July. Construction is planned to start in September and will carry all the way through the winter and this in the spring of next year and should be complete hopefully around late April or or May of next year. Once we have the finalized designs, which are in the coming weeks, we're going to post them on the town website so the public can see them, as well as we're going to have a a large board down at Pebble Beach. So when you visit, you can envision how the development's going to look when you come to the site. Modernizing our I T infrastructure. So we're going to upgrade the Wi-Fi service at the complex, the golf course clubhouse at Penn Lake this year. Development of the port authority with Beakdang. We've signed the memorandum of understanding to develop the project. And we're going to be meeting tonight, council to council, and this is one of our agenda items to keep moving forward with that corporate entity. The municipality is supportive of the mining industry. We've been an active participant in the G N P G M panel hearings. We've reconstituted regular meetings with Barrick, so administration holds those monthly with senior leadership at Barrick. Just to talk about issues that that affect the municipality and the mining sector, such as housing, recreation. Now, you see the the mural being painted at the arena. That's an example of, you know, coming out of those those meetings that we're holding on a monthly basis. And there's lots of junior mining companies in the area right now. So through our E D O, we're reaching out to those on a regular basis and making sure they have the municipality's support or if we can assist in facilitating, you know, local business services, so they're utilizing those from our community as well. The former mill site, we do have a current N O H S C grant to develop a marketing program for that site. So that works part and parcel with the port. And really, our focus is going to be on using digital media and social media to drive new business down there. We've been quite deliberate in holding off on that, making sure that we had the port structure in place before we launch something down there. And then finally, employee succession planning. So this is an exercise we complete each year internally to make sure that we have a plan in place that addresses the needs of things like attrition and retirements and ensuring we have our key positions filled within the municipality, which is an ever-challenging exercise these days. So that was completed in March of twenty twenty-two. And then finally, some of the other items around community development. Obviously, a key item in in October is going to be the municipal election. So that's a lot of behind-the-scenes work. And this year, of course, we're going to an electronic format. So hopefully, that'll drive more voter turnout. We've re-implemented the community development assistance program this year as part of the budget. So ten thousand dollars has been awarded to local community projects. You can see the continued upgrades and enhancements in the boat launch in Cummings Beach area. It's a part of the group of Trail Sevens Association. We still have the healthcare professionals recruitment committee in place, which is, obviously, it drives our physician recruitment and allied healthcare professionals recruitment. And then finally, we've once again supported the beautification for Peninsula Road with five thousand dollars in the budget. And we put a lot of work into ensuring that the Al Dixon Memorial Fish Derby and and our boat launch area was was ready to accept a number of boats and people that were in Marathon for that weekend. So all the projects that we've listed have been included in this year or previous year's budgets. And we're on, we're online to finish these projects with this current term of council. Great, I'd happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? And Mr. Squirtchinsky, Mr. Counselor Valance?
Yeah, when we look at the Wi-Fi for the rec complex and all that, will that be for public use? Or is that more for town of Marathon and administration infrastructure use?
So they'll be both. So there'll be, there'll be a network, a private network for use by municipal staff, but there also is going to be, there'll also be public networks. So and in some cases, we have them already. We're really just going to look to enhance them. You know, obviously, if you look at the rec complex, you know, you know, you look at things like, you know, steel beams and concrete, you know, maybe two years ago, the technology wasn't there, but now Wi-Fi technology is much better. And it will put those public networks in place and will be free use.
It's perfect for like the trade show and stuff like that when those events come back. So awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else?
The the residential planning for the expression of interest, what financial commitment does that have like for the town? Or is that just you putting it out there and contractors with approach you?
Yeah, so really, so really, we're being proactive as part of our twenty twenty-three budget process. And really, what we want to do is come up with a list of bidders that, you know, are we think would be capable. You know, really, we're going to look at a, you know, a model where, you know, it's probably, you know, I'll use around number of a hundred new homes as an example. It's probably built over three to four years. So we want to make sure, you know, we can we identify, you know, pre, you know, through the pre-qualification that the builder is capable of taking on those those homes, the building of those homes. Because we've seen in the past where, you know, through speculation, right? We see, you know, some developers want to buy a bunch of lots and hold on to them and never really develop them. So this process will will line us up well for the the budget process for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, to that point, again, I just, the memory of the last building spree we went on and the kind of disaster that happened there. How are we going to avoid that pitfall again in terms of not putting ourselves in that financial situation? I mean, I know it was a unique situation, but I think it's worth not repeating that history, right?
And I think, you know, when you use a pre-qualification process, you're, you know, what you're fundamentally doing is you're writing your tender upfront, right? So those that are going to bid on the tender know exactly what's going to be expected and what's going to be in the tender documents. So, you know, and we really set those parameters, you know, upfront. And we eliminate those types of issues when, you know, you get seven different tenders and, you know, some meet spec and some don't. In this case, they're they're all going to meet spec, you know, and they're all going to have that ability to to move the project forward if we select them.
And I think for counsel lakes, so another part of that is a sign, seal, and deliver contract. And before anything gets moved on your, that was a problem in the past, that you didn't have those contracts, specifically with the Ontario government. One of the big things that the town got, you know, almost four million dollars in one finance because it was a promise made by one government. And the next government came in and didn't think that was appropriate. But yeah, for sure. Anybody else?
Yeah, the pitfalls about this development then will be making it known that we are not responsible for the servicing of those lots. And that's where, if I remember from history, was the problem. We ended up servicing the lots or the community. The town ended up servicing the lots and then not having a market for them. So the the only thing I would stress from this portion and obviously, you know, hindsight's what it is. We need a timeframe on on the development of those lots because speculation may be a factor where people reputable company will sit on it until the very last minute, and then we end up with nothing in five years or whatever it may be. So I think those are the the key things. And I think from to from our perspective or from our for our own safety, I think we should also look at making sure that good land transfer lawyers are involved in this because, you know, we don't want to end up in a situation where, you know, we have the potential of all these houses, but nobody moving on it because they just decide to sit on it for their amount of time they're allowed to. So I understand that one from the, oh, sorry, let me continue. From the perspective of the election process, so as we move, or sorry, the the new election process, as we move forward and we we obviously, we learned this from the Ontario election with the bad turnoff. How are we going to move forward on that education? Because I think it's now is the time to make sure both, like, the public know how this is going to proceed moving forward so that there's not a surprise or a rash of people in late September trying to decide on how do they vote or what it may be. So from that perspective, do we have a plan in place or does administration have a plan in place? For the education, because we're moving to a new system of, I guess, captain your vote.
Excellent question, and I'll defer to Ms. Lee, who's our coordinator on, we do a process in place.
So there's going to be ads in the paper on Facebook, probably C F and O, just just letting people know that we are going to a different format for the election platform. We're going to be sending out pre-notification cards to everybody to make sure that the the information Uh, we're going to be sending out pre-notification cards to everybody to make sure that the, the information we have on the voters' list is correct. And if it's not, to get that information, because that is the important part of the, um, of the election is the voters' list. Uh, and we're also having, uh, we're doing, uh, like pamphlets and, um, I'll be going to the seniors' home or the seniors' club, uh, the manor, going into the, uh, the long-term care to help with their, their voting.
Are there any open meetings or information sessions that will be running or?
We, we could probably do like social media and like do.
Or even a YouTube channel that explains it so that.
Sure. And there, there's also going to be, um, a help. So voting will start actually October fourth, the beginning of our, um, voting period until the twenty eighth, twenty-seven, twenty. And then, um, the town office will have a help desk so that if anybody not comfortable with the electronic part of it, they can come in and we can walk them through it. There won't be any ballot boxes. There won't be any paper. It will all be electronic.
Okay, Council.
Uh, yeah, just one more question. This one's around the, uh, uh, the former mill site. And this is just because my memory is not as good as it used to be, but does, does the, the work that's being done, is that related to that listing that we were able to get through the provincial government as a remember there was, there was a program available to market.
As a grant.
Groundfields. Is that what this is related to?
No, we actually haven't, uh, submitted that application yet.
Okay.
Um, only because, um, they wanted us to complete a phase-two E A as part of that process. Um, and anybody knows how comprehensive a phase-two E A could be, uh, we chose not to. Uh, we've obviously completed a phase-one, um, and we're required, uh, three times a year to monitor that site. Um, and we, we utilize a consultant to do that. Um, and there's been no issues identified. So we don't believe a, a phase-two E A is, is warranted at this point. So we've just held, we're, we're still in the queue if we choose to submit.
Okay.
Um, but at the current time, that's why we held off.
Thank you.
Okay.
So a couple of. Tell us a few.
Um, and just for, sorry, one last question about the, the Pebble Beach development. When, um, that plan becomes public and posted to the website, is that plan like set in stone for?
It, it, it will be the project, what you will see is what'll be tendered.
Yeah.
Um, and if this, so this is, you know, the, the Pebble Beach project's been on the books for, you know, probably since the start of the strategic plan. And it's really meant to, you know, it's not a grandiose development and, you know, that's not to demean a million dollars going in there. Um, but it's really meant to, to do three things. Number one, make the site safer. Because, you know, we, we've obviously had issues in the past of, you know, vehicles almost sliding into Lake Superior. Um, but it's also going to bring it up to grade, uh, and make that, uh, and make that proper. Two, it's meant to make it more accessible. So it meets accessibility standards. Um, you know, and that's why, you know, the proper grading, the proper paving, the proper sloping, um, as well as the cut, you know, the, the, the building that's going to be constructed. Um, and really, we're following the model of the conversation at Penn Lakes. That's very much what it's going to look like. And then the third is to enhance the views, um, of that site. And what you're going to see and, and what we've worked with the landscape architects on is a, is a terrace system. So you really work your way from the top terrace to the bottom terrace and it gives you different views of Lake Superior. So it's going to be a really good development. It's not going to take away from the site. Uh, it's going to enhance it. And then as we move forward, um, as we've talked about as part of our strategic plan, uh, looking at the potential of adding the campground to the west of the site as part of the two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Okay.
Sort of just related to that, that development, uh, the, the other thing we had, we talked about, I don't know if it's still part of that thing, is, uh, incorporating some, uh, dishnabe words, um, in that site, like starting to make that a process of how we recognize the land we're on. I don't know if that's, uh, that's something that we could talk about, uh, obviously Beak Doggone tonight, but I'm just wondering if that's still part of the thinking around the project.
Yeah, so we won't complete any signage this year. For the signage is in the project budget. That's something that in two thousand and twenty-three, obviously, those are the, you know, kind of the final stages of the project. Um, you know, and I think, you know, that, you know, have that conversation with, uh, you know, with Beak Doggone makes sense and you know, I think it makes sense that we include that in, in our signage going forward as well.
So is everybody comfortable with the design and plan? Because that's the key message, right? Has everybody seen it? So is there an opportunity for council to look at that?
Sure.
Before it gets like that final step of approval? So everybody go, you know, is on, on page. So I think your description is very clear, but at the same time, looking at the plan. I've seen both copies. Both copies are good, but I think council, uh, should have an opportunity to look at it just to see. Maybe you can meet with the, the C O and if you have any, uh, opportunities to have, uh, input or any ideals that you see or not see within there that maybe could be incorporated somehow. Those are all things we talked about, what the enhances are going to be. Design aspect is Mr. Fry has taken that opportunity to design a suitable facility for us, but I think it's a good opportunity for council to take a look at that.
Good.
Okay. And, uh, we won't have an opportunity before it goes over to tender, I don't believe, to have a meeting because we won't wait for that.
No, we won't have a meeting, but certainly we can share the documents, uh, you know, with, with council on the final design and, and and post them publicly once, uh, you know, those final designs are in place, uh, before they go to tender.
Sure.
Okay, good. So with that being said, in regards to the actual elections, is there opportunity working with the library to have, uh, people have access to the computers in the library so they can go in and vote if they're not familiar with that? Yes, great. Uh, looking at the A S B S S B site, the subscriptions give regards to that. Uh, future development, looking now that we potentially could take over that site, can we look at that as part of our overall housing model, you know, design, if there's an opportunity there?
Yeah, so we actually just finally got all the, uh, titles, uh, for the transfer cleaned up uh, with both the M O E and the M and R within the last two weeks. Um, and we now have, uh, Rayonier Sign, Sign Off, so the former, uh, Tembec owner on it as well. Uh, so I expect that transfer will happen probably in the fall timeframe or the municipality, um, that'll come, come back to council in the fall timeframe for us to assume, uh, those sites as well as the A S B road. And what we've carved out is any historical liabilities, you know, vis-à-vis the pipeline that still exists and those types of. So that was the work through with the M and R and the M O E.
But I, I, I think this sort of to, to your point is, eh, whenever anybody comes to visit from the town, they're all, they always say, you don't have a single house that faces the lake, which is, I mean, the most beautiful lake on earth.
Yes.
It would be so nice.
Absolutely. So if there's an opportunity, we can look at that. We speak about that in, in the new council's term. Looking at that as part of the housing development, whether it's out in the lake or partially on the lake. And if there's an opportunity, maybe you want to buy a lot, maybe here it is seventy-five thousand dollars, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
You want to build, there is a potential building on the development of that lot. So just an idea to get a plan over the next, maybe part of our strategic plan for the new council to look at for the four years. Um, in regards to the, uh, firefighters, uh, training facility is great and it's great for the community to be hosted. We have a couple of containers over here in the trailer. Could they move those things out to their site so that, because it looks like it's part of a training aspect as well?
Those are, and those are, so there, there were some modifications made and those will be making their way over.
Yeah, just, yeah, just so that, because it looks like, you know, it does look suitable for where, where they're located. Uh, great. And then obviously with the potential, uh, P D A was changed due to COVID, uh, council, myself and, uh, Mrs. Korchinsky attended in March of two thousand and twenty, as you all recall, beginning of COVID. But I think this should be something that council should consider attending on a yearly basis. Uh, also supporting as you, we used to, Mr. Uh, Rudy Wall, as well as any junior that was setting up booth. Because I think that's a big part of our future and we know that we're money clearing up. So P D A is something we should be considering in a budget format each and every year, along with the A M O and the, and the Roma type conferences. So thanks for that report. Okay. Report on municipal policing, Mr. Skorchinsky.
So we're currently in a section-ten policing contract with the O P P. This contract is set to expire December of this year. The Community Safety and Policing Act two thousand and nineteen is still moving through the regulatory process and at this current time, there is no set date when it will come into force. So based on the foregoing, the municipality's current section-ten policing contract will need to be renewed and extended or reverted. Administration has been in contact with the O P P Municipal Policing Bureau to review contract options available to the municipality. There are no cost implications with this particular report. Policing costs are included in the annual municipal operating budgets. So the options available to council are extend the current section-ten agreement for either one year or two years by way of an amending agreement to the current contract. A bylaw will be required at the July meeting and this can be completed at any time before the expiration of the contract. Full renewal of the section-ten agreement with the longer term, uh, such as three, four, five or six years. And a bylaw is also required, uh, for this renewal. Or C is to get out of a section-ten or revert back to a section-five-point-one non-contract arrangement on January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, and note for options one and two, it would be indicated in the agreement that the contract would conclude on either the expiry date of the contract or the date when the C S P A two thousand and nineteen comes into force, if it does. Uh, and your administration presents this report for council's information and direction today.
Great, thanks. I have a motion here that council, hereby accepts the test report on condition of municipal policing. And then it'd be, there's a line here as administration is authorized to proceed as follows. With the appropriate bylaw being presented at the next regime of council on July, uh, eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Move by. Counselor Suki, second by, Counselor Lake. Questions? Counselor Lake?
Uh, the only one I can, I can sort of think of is, uh, you know, when you lock in a mortgage at a low interest rate, that's a good thing over time. Given the, the, just the price pressures everywhere right now, would it be good? Like, if you lock into a section-ten now, is that cost what you pay for those five or six years? Or does it go up anyway if, if the cost of gas goes up or?
Yeah, it, it doesn't lock the, the price.
Okay.
We get the annual billing statement and they tell you this is what you'll be paying next year for policing.
So there, there's no benefit in extending a lock?
Well, 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 the benefit of, of the section-ten is that you have some saving for the service and board and your placing aspect five-one, you don't have a board, you don't have, so say. So you'd be saving the cost of a board, uh, which is about, you know, anywhere from, say, four thousand to ten thousand, depending on how, how big the board becomes with the new changes. But right now, it's around six grand a year.
But I, I think it's clearly a section, well, to me, it's a section-ten. It's just, I didn't know if there was a benefit to extending out the.
And if council recalls, uh, just quickly, I'll get, get to, uh, we used to pay in two thousand and fifteen, one point four seven million, one point four seven million. They, I think, were paying close to eight hundred thousand, just under eight hundred thousand. So we've seen that change where the calls for service are reflective of the, the, the community's safety.
Yeah.
And, and the restructuring for the two hundred dollars plus per property rather than four or five hundred dollars than the calls for service. So we're in good shape.
Yeah.
Policing. And I don't see it going up dramatically because our calls for service have been pretty, pretty stable. Uh, so, and, uh, so that's, that's where we're at. And you'll see the, the average cost of living, you know, two, three percent, uh, added to the budgets annually, but not crazy unless something dramatic happens over the next three years. You know, and we even experienced even with the discussion around, uh, Valor Camp, no, to little impact. It was like two or three incidents over that two-year period. So we didn't see no calls for service rise of three hundred and thirty or forty, uh, individual construction or living in our community. So should be okay. Counselor DeBuchy, sorry.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, and obviously, you, uh, Counselor Lake made note of it. Obviously, we definitely don't want to go to five-point-one. The, and it's just a matter of how much time we do. Considering that the C S P A was enacted or was passed in two thousand and nineteen at its tolling committee and in regulations, um, obviously, if, when that comes into effect, all contracts will be void and we would follow that procedure. So it doesn't matter when we're going. Um, but given the fact that the current government has a mandate for the next four years, would it not be wise for us at least to go to that four-year term so that at least we're in that, or even the fifty-year term? Yeah, so we're, we're overlapping this government at least, so we have it. Because if and when, and you may note of governments changing, at least in this case, we have a, a section-ten in, or agreement-ten in place. And we also have it in place for if and when there is a transition of the provincial party in power, that we still have it in place before they enact their own regulations to the policing. So what I would recommend is, um, at least a five-year term if we can. And in that way, it brings us over. But if we're hesitant about that, then we would say the minimum would be at least in conjunction with this, I guess, the party in power or the current government.
So something like Counselor DeBuchy throwing up the number of five years, is everybody okay with that? I'm certainly fine with the five-year plan. And then the, the lap over carries not only for the provincial election, but also the municipal.
The election, yes.
Okay, so five years it will be. All in favor? Great, thank you for that. Okay, next we report on sixty-five Stevens Avenue, Mrs. Korchinsky.
So in October two thousand and twenty-one, sixty-five Stevens Avenue, the former Curling Club, uh, was purchased by Alea Inc. through an advertised tax sale. Since that time, administration has had, has had numerous discussions with Alea regarding their plan to convert the building and the property to a motel or a multi-residential unit property. This will require an official plan amendment and require the property to be rezoned as it is currently zoned open space. Alea has completed several of the required process steps for amendment rezoning, which include a feasibility study, architectural and engineering design, legal land survey, uh, official plan amendment and rezoning application and applicable fees paid. One of the final matters that must be addressed for the amendment and rezoning to move forward are some discrepancies identified through the recent land survey. It has been determined that the Curling Club property has historically encroached by approximately twelve meters onto municipal property. To rectify this matter, administration is proposing that the town transfer parts one and two of Plan fifty-five R six-one-nine-four to Alea for a nominal fee. This will allow rezoning and redevelopment plans to move forward. Administration does not see any potential future use of these lands by the municipality. So financially, administration is proposing that a two hundred dollar administrative fee, uh, as per fees and charges be charged to complete the transaction and that any legal fees required to be covered by Alea Incorporated. Uh, Alea will also be required to commit to the necessary consolidation to complete the cleanup of the rule numbers in the rulebook. So options A, approve the transfer of parts one and two, or B, do not approve the transfer. And your administration recommends that option A be approved and that the municipality transfer parts one and two of Plan fifty-five R six-one-nine-four to Alea Inc. for the fee of two hundred dollars plus any legal, any required legal fees.
Three things for that report. I do have a motion in council, hereby accepts the attached report recommendation on sixty-five Stevens Avenue and prove that the administration is authorized to transfer parts one and two of Plan fifty-five R dash sixty-nine-fourteen to Alea Inc. for the fee of two hundred dollars plus any required legal fees as stated. Move by. Counselor Suki, second by Counselor DeBuchy. Questions? Absolutely.
Um, just looking at, uh, kind of the, the diagram of it, is that going to impact our recreation facilities that are there at all?
So, yeah, I, I don't believe it does, uh, because, you know, so really, the, the simplest way to explain it is, you know, if you, you know, look, you're at, you're on the outdoor rink, you know, you're looking back at the Curling Club steps. It's going to come, we're going to, you know, we're recommending as we transfer twelve meters of that, which is theoretically just open space there. We don't believe that it affects parking whatsoever. This is just really the, the simplest way for this to move forward. Uh, obviously, we want to see the redevelopment happen. Um, and then just, this just cleans it up from a, you know, a, a numbers perspective on the roll book. And, uh, you know, they're, they're fully ready to move forward with the process and start that, to the project. So in, uh, from an administration perspective, this is just simple and clean. Uh, our C B O have recommended, uh, this is the process that we use and, and that's what we're proposing to council.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, because they, they, right now, it's not carbon stone. It's a multi-res or, or hotel development or whatever it may be. But, uh, because it's open space now or the lot itself, the, I'm assuming we're considering the property in question as open space, so that'll have to be, or reallocated to commercial or whatever. Uh, with the easement of the railway and the fact that our sidewalk, where it basically goes right along the side edge of the building, um, is there allotment for them to do parking and accommodate those issues? Because historically, the laneway goes around there. Um, there's a residence that's just on the west side of it. Our park is on the east side of it. The railway is pretty close, um, and our sidewalks right there. So from here, I'm not sure, um, if they develop parking or some entrance in the front side or the even avenue side, would they not be approaching on our property again or our easement again?
So the, the parking will be on the railroad side? Um, so it meets code. So what, what we're going to be doing, uh, is, uh, if council approves, uh, so the official planned amendment we're going to make is site-specific zoning for this particular piece of property. Um, so we, we do have to consult with C P Rail, uh, if council approves tonight, which will, we will do. Um, but, you know, all our O P says is that we have to consult with them because it, it, it falls within a certain distance of the railway. So, so by writing the site-specific zoning, it meets the requirements of any building code or any act. Um, it allows for a thirty-unit development with the thirty-unit parking spaces. So it, it fits within the site. Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of space there in that property. Absolutely. Okay, anything else? Okay, with that being said, I ask a question. Call it favor. Very, thank you. Yep, next I have the motion in regards to the following checks and the check run be approved or payment in the accounts payable, section of eight hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars eleven cents. And a payroll six hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars eighty-one cents. Move by. Counselor Lake, second by. Counselor Balance, any questions to those check runs? During that, call a question on favor. Very, thank you. Up next, I have a quick verbal report on my A M O attendance, uh, just in very sound. Uh, typically, the A M O board meets. in person because of COVID last year, they have it, uh, in the hometown of the president of the association. I don't know if you follow AMO closely, but our pre-pass president, uh, Grayden Smith uh, stepped down because he ran for the provincial government. He did get elected in Bracebridge in his riding. And he also been appointed to the Ministry of Natural Resources by the Ford Government. So congratulate Grayden and uh, uh, Jamie McGarvey, who was the previous president, took over for the interim until the election in uh, in August in Ottawa. So that was all great. We talked a lot about uh, uh, the policy procedures of AMO, of course, the conference coming up and the the fact that it's uh, it's quite uh, subscribe, it's almost over, subscribe. So it's really good. So a lot of people is eager to get back and get into that conference and and see how things are and be in public. Everybody at our meeting was very happy to be back together in person. Uh, we have the same thing. People are wearing masks, people have color codes on, whether you feel comfortable having people shake your hand, talk to you. So I think everybody's getting it. So if you have a green, you know, you're good to go, a yellow, you're, you know, red, stay away from me, same thing. So it's all good, right? Uh, Council Valance, I experienced that at Fort Frances with the Noma, and it works well. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask, you want to wear a color code, you settle by your own comfort level. So it's it's really good. Uh, we talked a lot about the uh, the the systems in place, LES in regards to the town, towns involved with the LAS and the fact that we see benefits from that. They're going to try to expand that, look into insurance. Uh, we all know we're paying higher premiums for insurance. And also cyber, and I did reach out to our CAO and that, you know, the cyber stuff was amazing that, you know, we we shouldn't be talking about any cyber type of security, whether it's going for, you know, and of pretend or ending it in public, because the people out there are listening all the time. And, uh, believe it or not, they're looking forward to having communities identify that are going to get insured for cybersecurity because then they can hack you. And, you know, it's amazing, like the stuff out there. So we talked a lot about that. That took a better part of an hour and a half of of discussion, but we're looking forward to pooling the public portion of the liability insurance from municipalities through LAS. It could be beneficial, could we all save money? So they got, they hired new individuals for the policy on that. And that's going to be discussing that over the next several months. And what does that look like? But cyber is going to be number one uh, through AMO. And then, of course, it'll be the liability portion would be second. Blue box. Yeah, we're getting, hey, we're getting there. It's it's rolling out fast at here. So we we should be hearing something over the next little bit. We we already have it in regards to whether or not the municipalities are interested in still maintaining the system, but the the, uh, obviously, the manufacturer covering the cost. So it's moving. And finally, you know, we all knew it was going to be by twenty-five. It seemed like the the, you know, the manufacturers and the producers are starting to say, okay, we're we're on guest wall, we got to get it done. So there was a lot of discussion around that. So that was really good. Uh, and then, uh, basically, we had a good, good discussion around the appointments. As we all know, that was uh, discussed that Friday morning was part of our meeting. So we took a bit of a break when we heard the announcement. We talked about the benefit of having all the individual cabinet ministers. Not a lot of changes. You all followed. Uh, so I was looking forward to the in-person uh, in Ottawa to see what the government's going to do. Very, everybody was very happy, whether you're like the progressive conservative or not. It's the fact that the government didn't change and we have the continuity and the relationship go with this government. And we believe that they're really pro economic, pro business, pro mining, pro forestry. So they they have a lot of good things going for them. Hopefully, they can keep the ball rolling. And that was a lot of discussion around that. Um, the rest, a lot of it is just our our due diligence business, uh, through the, you know, the caucuses, all the caucuses do the reporting. You don't want to hear any of that stuff because there's ten different caucuses, uh, where the rural northern caucus, we report on our stuff. And of course, there there are the rural southern caucus, the big ten, the big cities, all them. So it's interesting how we all have the same issues, but just on a different scale, right? So and then then we got into homeless and the housing issues. And I sat as part of the housing committee. And uh, it's a, it's a dilemma everywhere. And as we just heard from our CAO, and we're looking at building, and people are moving to smaller communities, small, everywhere you talk, everybody I talk to, their communities are all seeing a dramatic increase in uh, housing purchases and no vacancies. So they're all getting out of the big centers and trying to get back to smaller centers and moving home, kids are moving home in a in a higher rate. And uh, the the shortages everywhere. So not just the big cities, but it's the smaller communities as 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 well as we've seen a big difference in last year's economy. So it was a good meeting, and I look forward to going to uh, to Ottawa in August. Counselor Debus.
Um, you mentioned, um, I guess, joint liability or the LAS insurance uh, plan. The AMO is not advocating um, self-insuring, are they?
They're they're looking at through the LAS. LAS is a very uh, uh, big on pooling. So for example, we buy our tools and, you know, things through LAS, they pool. So they get the providers out there, say, okay, we're going to attract four hundred fifty-four people to come to buy, not view what the best deal you can do. So that's how they get their deals. So it's not necessarily a self-insuring. It's a pooling system that they're looking at bringing the big guys in, it's the same thing. You know, whoever that might be, counsel, wish, I'm not sure, but it, we should see benefits from it based on today's cost. We should see a benefit going forward.
Because one of the things that I think, yeah, self-insuring, it was explored years ago. And the idea was, if you have a good rates
Yeah.
or a good history, you're paying for somebody who has a bad one, or if somebody had a bad accident, we all have to pay for it. So I I just wanted to make sure that AMO was not trying to loop around back to that.
Absolute, absolute. Just basically, the LAS is part of the one arm of AMO who does the business side and tries to get the best deal for your.
Yeah, natural gas.
Yeah.
They do it all. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So that's part of it. That's a fall into their mandate.
Oh, sorry, about the um, joint liability. Is there any? Yeah. Is there any movement from AMO and or other districts? Because it's basically hand gate or hand grenade litigation, and whoever has the biggest pockets pays, and usually it's municipalities or big companies. So.
Right, but so, yeah, AMOs have talked about it, talked with ministers about it, and basically, joint civil liability is not the biggest impact to our insurance. Ninety-nine point nine percent of times, it's this frivolous is thrown away. They make the claim through the uh, the lawyers, uh, for, for example, car going through our community within our boundaries, they try to through the town, but you know, it just gets thrown away. So it's more of a hassle, but we have to go through the hassle. But, yeah, the AMO has been discussing this with the ministers, and and it's not joint civil liability that's costing us the money. It's the claims that are costing us money within our own values. There's a lot of claims, and there are a lot of things by our own taxpayers. Or, you know, silly, silly slips and falls potentials, whenever you're not wearing the proper shoes, God, that's our fault. But those are kind of, kind of, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Yeah, just on that point, and and, you know, so so AMO has seven recommendations that they've tabled with the minister around joint civil liability. One of the major issues in Ontario that's different, say, from Alberta, is in Alberta, if you submitted a frivolous lawsuit, right, then you would be litigated against. Whereas in Ontario, that that doesn't happen, right? You're you're free to submit as many claims as you you wish under Jordan's civil liability. So one of the proposed AMO recommendations is we change that system so that it becomes punitive, it's it's not a legitimate claim.
Makes sense, right?
Okay, thank you.
All good. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, before we adjourn, obviously, uh, we have, uh, we have Canada Day coming up this week on Friday, and hopefully, it'll be warmer than it has been for a little bit, but um, I encourage everybody to move. I see we got a lot of little treat bags for the kids in the next room. So hopefully, it'll be, uh, it'll be a nice day, and we can all take part in Penn Lake. And uh, I encourage everybody to come on out. We're going to have a great deal of activities out there and uh, Bouncy Castle's food and entertainment and cake and uh, and fireworks. So come on out to Penn Lake on Friday and take part in the uh, in-person Canada Day activities and bring your lawn chair and the kids. Anything else? So good. We will adjourn. We're going to a closed meeting right after this public meeting, uh, to discuss. Get that, Karen. Thank you very much. Security of property, Mr. By the local board and personal mayors, but identifiable individual, including in the simple or local board employees. Would that be a sample? Adjourn this public meeting at the hour of five, uh, sorry, four four, four fifty-five PM. Move by. Counselor Valance, second by counsel, thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, Karen. Um, I have to drive to the main site, so I was mentioned to Darryl.